We have a 9:45 AM item, item 6.3. Consideration of presentation from Illumination Technologies California and B. Direction to staff to review existing county sites for use as tower locations. Supervisor Pyska.
Illuminations Technologies is based in Calistoga and we've had, I've had, I've seen several of their presentations over the past months. This technology could, you know, bring more sirens to our community, very high level fire detection, early detection, as well as increase our network and bring in redundancies with cellular coverage and broadband coverage, which all of those things we desperately need. So Chris Cannon is the CEO of Illumination Technologies and also the mayor of Calistoga. So Chris, welcome and thanks for coming.
Thank you very much Supervisor. I appreciate all of your time. Yep, I'm your neighbor over in Calistoga. Thank you for your time. I will keep this as quick as I can. I know some of you have met with other colleagues of mine, Richard Blasell, who lives up in the Cobb area, has been a longtime resident of Lake County, and then all of my other colleagues were all from this area with the exception of one who works with us out of Miami, but he's super smart, so we're allowing him to help us out on this side of the country now and then. That's George Moreno. I'm going to share a screen to help us through the conversation, if that's okay with you. And if you guys can see that, just give me a thumbs up.
Yep, popped up.
Okay, great, thank you. So as Supervisor Pyska mentioned, we are located over in Calistoga. We were established in October of 2018, but we are part of a larger company that's been around for just about 20 years, doing the type of work that I'm going to talk to you about here. We have, our primary basis is the telecom industry. We build infrastructure to support telecom. But our point of difference is that on that same infrastructure, or as a result of that same infrastructure, we are able to provide public safety benefits to different communities around the world. We currently operate in 22 different countries. We have just over 4,800 telecom structures throughout the world. We are considered by the FCC as a passive infrastructure provider. We are not officially a telecom company, but we support those telecom companies through the work we do. Kind of our products and services, what we bring into a community is a turnkey concept, both to the communities and also to the telecom providers. So from soup to nuts, engineering design, licensing permits, et cetera. One of the advantages we do offer, because we are not a telecom company, is co-location. So on the infrastructure we present to a community, multiple carriers can occupy that space versus each of the carriers, whether it be an AT&amp;T, Verizon, or Sprint, having their own infrastructure spread throughout a relatively small geography. And we do multi-purpose infrastructure, so that, you know, if you're going to put something in a community, take up some space, it's going to serve multiple purposes. The biggest point of difference that we offer is the fact that we go and partner with communities first, prior to partnering fully with telecom. We all know the challenges that public agencies have with telecom carriers, and we all know the challenges telecom carriers have with public agencies. I could speak to that firsthand. But what we do is we come in, partner with the public agency, in this case would be the county of Lake, and find out what their greatest needs are, what their greatest public concerns are, and then also see if they have, or would they benefit from improvements to their telecommunications. Once we have established those communities and what their needs are, we go out to the telecommunications companies, the AT&amp;Ts and Verizons of the world, and see if there is a business interest on their behalf to be in those areas or service those communities. You know, one of the questions asked is why would a carrier, what an AT&amp;T, Verizon, et cetera, or a US Cellular want to have us build their infrastructure versus them? And the simple reason is it's a balance sheet exercise. If a US Cellular or an AT&amp;T builds their own, that's capital expenditure, which shows up very differently on their balance sheet to their shareholders. When they lease someone else's structure, that being ours, it comes from a different side of their balance sheet and reflects a different image or portrayal to their shareholders. So very transparent about the fact and very upfront, we are a privately held for-profit company that serves the telecommunications, but also, as mentioned, our point of difference offers public safety benefits to communities that on their own would want this, but may not be able to afford it. So we secure locations in the community in the public right of way. That's the communities give, if you will. We purchase, install, and maintain the public safety benefits, and that's all paid for through the leasing of that infrastructure to telecom. Some of the benefits are, you know, it improves the telecommunications within a community, in this case, within your county. We all know that on a daily basis, telecommunications networks can be frustrating, but that's extremely critical infrastructure during an emergency. And we have all shared more than, had more than our fair share of these challenges. It is also a community-wide or county-wide detection system that we're suggesting, an alert system. And again, because there is no financial contribution by the public agency, by the county, there is no impact to already stressed budgets. And again, there's no financial contribution, but we are not, you know, ignoring the fact that what you're offering up is access to your public right of way. Some of the public safety solutions that we will bring will have all of the elements included in them. Like I said, from the acquisition of the technology to the installation and to its maintenance for the lifetime of an agreement. Most of our agreements with public agencies run 30 years. And we have things that we've offered in other communities around the world, and now in the U.S. Early wildfire detection, which we'll talk about momentarily, fiber, public Wi-Fi in some communities, smart LED lighting, CCTVs, LPRs, which are license plate readers, and flood sensors. The vast majority of our business globally is done in the video surveillance realm because of the areas we operate in. In those countries, some of them have crime concerns. That's not what we're offering here, unless that's something of interest. We have, you know, different concepts around the planet that we work on are ecological islands, which are based in free public Wi-Fi in community parks. I mentioned video surveillance, bringing drinking water to areas that are concerned. And then more to the left of this slide is the natural hazard issues and the early wildfire detection. Our monopoles or our infrastructures, and when we say, if you hear me use the word "power," that could be something as short as 18 feet, all the way up to 60 feet. We do the best job we can to camouflage them. As we joke, we have the prettiest ugly cell towers that you'll find out there. But we do, because we're working at the front end with the public agency, we are very sensitive to aesthetics and placement. This is an example, for those of you that do commute across from Lake County over to Sonoma County, if you use Petrified Forest Road, this is one of our structures you'll see. The only difference on this photo is there is actually a siren that sits at the top of it. This photo is taken just before the siren was hoisted. And again, it's an effort to try to have it blend in. As you come up the hill, there is some shadowing from other trees that helps along, but this is just a real live example of what we have that you'll see if you head up Petrified Forest Road out of Calistoga into Santa Rosa. So we do not design any of our own technology. We go out into the world and find who creates or who's invented or utilizes the best technology for a particular problem. And no surprise to you, and it's the same issue on this side of the mountain over in Napa County, as well as Sonoma County and Marin County, who we're working with. Wildfires are a massive issue, and it's year after year after year. And I have, you know, five other slides we could talk about, is it's going to be a problem in California in the future? And the very short answer is absolutely. So what we have to do is help mitigate for these challenges that we're going to be facing for decades. And one of the first things we said is, you know, early detection is critical, no matter who you talk to and what element of fire safety or fire mitigation. When you talk about early detection, that has to happen. So we partnered with a German company. They're based in Berlin. They've been doing this for 20 years. They're called IQ Fire Watch. On your free time, which I know is rare, Google them. You'll see that they started just over 20 years ago. They were a collaboration with the European Space Agency to design a technology and a sensor concept that they've now commercialized and have been using throughout the world on Earth. They've got 11 different countries. This technology, these sensors, cover 15 million acres. And its biggest point of difference relative to Alert Watch, which is out there, covers your county as well as ours. The biggest difference is this is artificially intelligence-driven, processing 24/7 of three different types of technologies, constantly overlapping and overlaying, so that it can detect at its earliest stage, the ignition of a fire. And its difference from an infrared system, for example, which is the state is testing now, is an infrared detection system requires a pretty significant heat source at the base for it to be detected up high, or that flames or fire actually have to be in the crown of trees. And as you all know, that by the time it's in the crowns of the trees, you're off to the races and it's kind of late. This technology actually detects, in the simplest terms, smoke, whether it's the day or night. And basically, it's a disturbance that's created by the burning greenery below, up into the atmosphere that this detection device finds. And artificial intelligence will continue to look at it, scan out the horizon, and when it detects something, it alerts a human. So this all goes back to a monitoring center that's operated in person 24/7. The device or the technology tells the human, hey, there might be something to consider. The human looks at that data and then determines, hey, this is worth checking out further, and then alerts the closest fire authority. Currently, the monitoring center is in Berlin, but we've actually secured a monitoring center that'll be operating out of Arizona for our U.S. operations. So it is a little bit closer to home. Richard Blasell, who's on the line, and I hope he's been unmuted. He, as I mentioned, is our project manager and engineer, and this is near and dear to his heart because he is a resident up in Cobb. He's going to talk to you about the locations being recommended in this particular part of Lake County. So Richard, if you're there, just kind of give a quick overview of how they determine where these should go and these particular sites.
All right.
And there we go.
So we reached out to IQ Fire Watch, and we start with, you know, where would be the ideal location to cover the most amount of geography? So we reach out, and on the next slide, we'll show what these typical proposed sites would cover. And that's the area that IQ would show, that he just switched to there. As I said, these are proposed sites. There could be more, and if we found a proper location, we've been able to do some rearranging that it might be less or more, depending upon which sites we were able to get to, because a lot of these end up being mountainous sites. And in saying that, just so you're aware, what we're currently working on is complete solar, complete battery backup, and whether that be satellite link or microwave as a backhaul. So they're freestanding alone units that can be placed generally anywhere. But we run into a lot of private properties in that regard. So this is the overview of the coverage that IQ Fire Watch has sent back to us, and that's a pretty sizable chunk of Lake County there. There's a few more to be looked at, but this would be the general overview of it.
Thank you. The second phase of this, so detection, as we all know, is important, early detection, first, to get people out of the way, protect life safety, and second, to be able to get resources to the source of that fire before it becomes much larger. The, in the detection system, because there are multiple cameras that cross-reference, when in a report, you know, after it goes from the AI to the human monitoring center, when that report is given to the local fire authority, they're issued actual images, exact coordinates. This system can detect within three meters of the source of a fire or the ignition point of a fire, so it's about 10 feet of where that is, which helps considerably in applying those resources directly. The second part of, you know, after you've detected it and you're hopefully rolling resources to that, is to alert people. And I know that there are already several siren systems or sirens throughout different parts of Lake County, and we're looking to parlay that. Part of another company we partner with, because we believe them to be the best in the business, is Federal Signal. And we use as an example here, their model 2001-130, which is a very high-powered device that is rotating. We actually have these installed in northern Napa County, specifically over the city of Calistoga. There's five of these. High decimal output, similar to IQ Fire Watch. We all know that we can't rely on PG&E power all of the time, as of late, not most of the time. So these are solar power, battery-backed up alert systems. Important point, these cannot be activated by the artificial intelligence-driven detection systems. A human being actually has to make that decision, and that decision is left up to the local public safety officials. It's not something that we do, it's not something that IQ Fire Watch does or Federal Signal, it's whoever the public agency, public safety agency is. Richard, if you want to give a note as to these particular locations.
Okay, so we've worked with several of the chiefs around the lake, Chief Duncan, Chief Wayne, Chief Sulpetus, and we've looked at all of these locations, and this would be the coverage for the sirens. It would reach a little bit farther than that, but we're talking about 80, 75, and 70 decibels. 80 being just to the outside of the yellow ring, 75 just to the outside of the blue ring, and 70 just outside of the green ring. If you're around any of the sirens, you have a pretty good idea of what the coverage is of them, if they're properly placed. And this would go right into the sirens that are already in place within the county. We visited all these locations. We've gone back and forth with the chiefs, and this is what we've come up with so far.
There we go. Thank you. This next slide here, which piggybacks onto the decibel range of the sirens, now incorporates, as mentioned, the cell coverage or cellular signal, RF signal, that we believe would be presented from these. Richard, you want to talk about that briefly?
Yeah, so I've overlaid what we, I've used two miles as a range. That propagation over water is a little bit farther, but along the Riviera side, you would get coverage from the opposite side of the lake. And this would just fill in a lot of, a lot of coverage holes and would just greatly help out the community all the way around. So this is what that would generally look like in these locations.
No surprise, there hasn't been any community that we've gone into and done an RF analysis on that would not benefit from enhanced cell coverage. And certainly, you all know your community better. There are certain gaps and issues in cell coverage. Again, this model works because the cell carriers are, would be interested. We have already spoken to kind of the three biggies in your, your part of the world. And while there is interest, they need to know that there's support, because there tends to be challenges whenever cell companies try to come in. But again, the difference is, we're offering this via the use of, utilization of public safety benefits, which is very different than what carriers tend to do, which is not offer local communities very much at all, if anything. Let's see if this will let me go to the next slide. Richard?
So in this slide, these are proposed locations of cell coverage, where we are lacking cell coverage here in this county. Obviously, there's a number of other places. These are the first ones that come to mind. We, you know, we've looked at the Lucerne Fire Department as one of the sites, and there's already a Verizon site that's on that location. But generally speaking, these are the initial proposed site locations that would most quickly and quickly help out the community, especially along the 29 corridor. You know, it's a, it's a long process for that new highway project to get done, but we all know what the coverage is there, and even coming into Kelseyville, and even around the corner into Lakeport. Clear Lake is also another area that could use some help. And this is an overlay of the IQ sites along with the fire stations and a couple other locations that would be proposed as well.
So with that said, trying to keep it short and sweet and respect your time, that's the overall concept that we have here. We are, we do have a project in front of the county of Napa, which is going to consist of eight IQ fire, early fire detection systems, and 21, I believe, telecom sites to fund that. We're also speaking with Sonoma County, Marin County, and then there's a couple of cities and towns in Southern California. While this is a business endeavor for us, we are all from this area. We all have experienced this in one form or fashion, you know, in Richard's case, unfortunately, the loss of two homes. In my case, on my night job, evacuating the community twice. So we're well aware of the fact that this is not a situation that the government sector is going to solve on its own, or that the private sector is going to solve on its own. It's got to be a partnership with both. So with that said, I will take any questions you might have, and thank you again for your time.
Thank you very much, Chris. I'm going to open it up first to Chief Duncan, who's had his hand up for a while, and obviously has had a lot of interactions with Illumination, so I thought I'd start off with Chief Duncan. If we can get him to unmute.
Oh, muted. There you go.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and I appreciate the time. Thank you Supervisor Sabatier for that. Question for you, the map seems to end a little bit short of the counting line, so we got a lot of counties south of where these maps are cutting off still. As Richard also lives in that area, that's a concern for me. Additionally, so my question, and what we've been seeing a lot, is power outages, so PSPS events. So I really want to know what our capacity is for battery backup, and inevitably, in a red flag event, we're going to get the power shut off, we're going to be operating on battery backup. But what is the timeframe for that? And we're seeing that 72 hours is not enough. So I would like to see, now we're pushing out maybe a week's worth of backup power or so, enough propane to run that generator to power that site for a week. Additionally, the, there's a couple of locations up in Cobb that don't have coverage with the sirens that are already there. So I'd really like to see if we can get on the list for a tower up in that area, more towards the top of the town site, and maybe one towards Lockloman, where we have some more spots in there that don't have coverage from the current siren system. So not sure if, how we can get a couple more sites on your radar, but there is a lot of South County beyond that map. Thank you.
Absolutely. I'll let Richard address the mapping element. Let me talk briefly about the, the battery backup and the solar coverage, which are critical. We all know that the PSPS situation is going to be here, and it goes hand in hand with fire season. So on the IQ Fire Watch system, for the early detection, that has 24 hours of battery backup, which is generated through solar activities. So, you know, at worst-case scenario, there's darkness for 24 straight hours, that system will still work, but the reality is, is it needs to carry us basically through the evening. The type of solar panel system we're using can work in, you know, less than ideal conditions. On the siren side, Richard, I believe the battery backup on that is eight hours, and the, and those are again, solar-generated or solar, the batteries are being filled through solar, so that, that's helpful there. The alarm system, the sirens, once they're off and running, and you've chosen as a community to activate them, which is a message to seek further information for your community, there's kind of a rare occasion where you're going to activate them multiple times during an incident, because at that point, when you've exhausted eight hours worth, you're probably already telling your community that they need to be out of here. The cellular side, you know, right now, the Public Utilities Commission requires any new, newly developed cellular location in fire-prone areas, which clearly we are, has to have a minimum of 72 hours of backup. At this point, that's all their carriers are required to do. And, you know, I'd love to be in a position where they have to carry a week's worth as well, but at this point, we're even happy that they're being actually ordered to get up to at least 72 hours worth. On that note, Richard, on the mapping, if you kind of, we're happy to go beyond this, but where this is kind of where we're starting, and a lot of this, remember, is driven by where we feel we can commercialize a cell site to help pay for this as well. But Richard, do you want to talk about expanding the map?
So the map was cut off a little bit, and so for Chief Duncan, this actually starts around the Rancheria area down by Twin Pines, and that would be LC 12, then over Hidden Valley area, which would be LC 14 on the map. And then we have an IQ site proposed for, up on Cobb, and also the stretch between Hidden Valley and Lower Lake, and then up on Cobb as well, around the water tanks by, not Harrington Flat, but up by the chopper landing.
Yeah, the box, box tell attack base.
Exactly, exactly. At the water tanks there, we have a site proposed for there as well.
Okay. Yeah, I just didn't see it on the map, so thank you for that clarification. And we appreciate all that fire intel that we get from those, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's go ahead and open up for the board for any comments or questions. Supervisor Pyska, would you like to start us?
I would. Thank you for the presentation. I think we all recognize this is the kind of technology that we desperately need, and, you know, we're, we're in another potentially very dangerous summer, and I think our summers are going to be this way going forward. So a couple questions. Sorry, I'm looking at my eyes. So how are you going to, with these added sites, there's going to be some redundancy and overlap, and I appreciate that, because we do have situations where our towers go down. And so I know Richard has, you know, worked in this profession for a long time, so I appreciate you building, him building in these redundancies. The other issue is testing. Currently, we have siren testing done through the sheriff's office, who will be in charge of activating the sirens. And currently, we're doing the first Monday of the month testing in Cobb, which is great, because everybody can get a feel for where they are when the siren goes off. And so, you know, we've realized over the course of a year or so that we need to add additional sirens. So if we could have, you know, that's going to be a part of this, is monthly siren testing for everybody in the county. And it's going to get us all in the habit of listening for those sirens, knowing what to do, becoming acclimated to a new form of technology. Unfortunately, Sheriff Martin wasn't able to make it here today, but I have had these discussions with him in the past, so it's going to be really interesting to, to hear his perspective after he gets to view this presentation later. Just bringing more coverage to the county is so important. I mean, I have been evacuating during times and not have cell coverage, and that is a very dangerous, terrifying situation to be in. This is also an economic issue, where we should have full coverage on all of our arterial routes throughout the county. Many of us have, you know, we know when we have to drop a claw, because I'm going through a section of highway, and that's just not really acceptable in this day and age, to have these blackout zones on our highways. I've shared this story before. I was very pregnant one day coming home. I just had my car serviced at the dealership, and it broke down, and night was falling, and I was very, very pregnant. I was very, very pregnant, and I was stuck on the side of the road, and that was a terrifying situation for me to be in. And again, this day and age, that shouldn't happen. So I appreciate this presentation, and I really hope the rest of the board got a lot out of this. Some of the things to consider, this is going to take a, if we give the direction today for staff to look into identifying our county sites, it's going to take a significant amount of county hours to, to do this work, and so I'm just wondering from your perspective, Chris, how would we cover that?
So the way we've, just real quickly on the siren testing, there are best practices recommended by the manufacturer. We have firsthand experience up here. We chose initially not to follow the best practices, which is once a month for three minutes. We chose once a month for thirty seconds, and the public became very upset that they couldn't hear it, et cetera. So now we do the first Wednesday, first Wednesday of every month at noon for three full minutes so that everybody can kind of figure that part out. So that's a recommendation we make. On the amount of time offered, we come in, most of the work we can do is desktop exercises from coverage for the IQ system, the Fire Watch system, and then also from sirens. And then we'll bring and we'll put people on the, on the ground from our manufacturers we partner with and ourselves, and we'll do a lot of the, most of the legwork before we even come and utilize staff time, just so, you know, we're aware of that. We deal, work with public agencies all the time. Napa County is a great example. We probably put in, you know, two hundred hours of work before we even went to the county to say, these are the sites that we would suggest you're looking at, to kind of get that started and respecting the fact that, you know, we, we don't want to utilize too much of their time and how that gets covered. They've chosen to cover that as part of their public safety element. Everything else that we can cover, we, we pay all of our, you know, permit fees, inspection fees, we're paying for the SEQA study that the county of Napa has chosen to do on a public safety system. We could have a debate about that. So we don't ask for any breaks or discounts on, you know, encroachment fees, permit fees, et cetera, but there will indeed be some county time that's involved, and where that's mostly come in is getting access to the actual right-of-way maps. There are recommended right-of-way maps we can do desktop, but until the county kind of lets us know on their GIS system that that, you know, location needs to be moved fifty feet left or right, that can be a challenge. But we, we, we do as much heavy lifting as we can before we drop it on someone's desk because we live that every day.
While this is an evolving step, what we've done for Napa County is we have created PDF files and there's videos as well of each location, exactly where we're proposing the pole to go, and just pictures from every direction so that we wouldn't want to waste any staff's time to actually have to go and visit it unless there, there was an actual need for them to be there, and then everybody can get an idea and an overview of exactly where everything would be, and any overhead potentials, trees in the way, which we do not remove trees, and, you know, things of that nature, underground utilities, is there a gas line that's, you know, fifty feet away? We just mark everything.
I, I'd like to interrupt the conversation real quick. As this is a private company, I, I'm feeling some little discomfort of speaking about specifics of any projects versus maybe some questions about their product that they're offering to provide, and I'd like to go to Ms. Grant to kind of help us make sure that we're staying within our lines and the confines of the agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I, I understand your concern, and certainly it's clear that Illumination Technologies is simply trying to inform your board, but there is a line in terms of between presentation and job interview, and that's really where it has to stay. So again, as long as you're speaking in general remarks and the type of work that needs to be done, you're all right, but specifics for Lake County at this point would require a different agenda item.
Thank you very much for the clarification. Any other supervisor or Supervisor Pisca, if you still had some open questions left over?
Nope. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Scott, I saw your hand.
Just wanted to say I appreciate this, this, this discussion. I know that public safety is definitely key. I know for myself, I've been at the shelters during evacuation, waiting for updates from our sheriff and unable to get those updates because he is not in an area where he can communicate. I, I love the idea that we're connecting this with a public safety element because we struggle here in Lake County when we do want to put up a cell tower to have that communication. There's a lot of pushback. So it's really a mixed bag, a fifty-fifty of people not wanting to see more towers go up, and then those who know that public safety and having that communication is key. So I think this is going to be an easier conversation when we connect it to public safety, so I, I just really appreciate that, and I, I think we need to be looking forward to something to, to bring this into our community, if it's this company or another company, but we definitely need to be looking at this. And I know Supervisor Sabatier has been working hard on this subject, bringing in communication to our community so everybody will have equal access. So thank you.
Supervisor Scott, there isn't a community we've been to where we don't, this debate doesn't happen. You know, cell towers, fortunately or unfortunately, they're necessary evil for communication. The difference we're making is taking that necessary evil of the structure and giving it a public safety benefit as well, but.
Thank you very much. Any other comment or questions from supervisors? Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, just, you know, I appreciate this as well. This is a synergistic type of approach to numerous different issues that we can solve. And I just, was it ever just a question? Did, did anyone ever look into possibly the area where Lake Hillsbury is for a tower or something like that? I've just, I know there's a small area out there, but it is an entry point for fire possibilities. It just a thought.
Richard?
Yes, absolutely. We've looked at IQ Fire Watch for out there, and then in some cases, you know, we do just simply a siren. If, if there's no feasible way to do a, a cell location there, it, it has been done in the past, so that's definitely an area that I've looked at. Blue Lakes as well, we looked at the Blue Lakes Fire Department. I know there's a Verizon site up on the top of the hill there, and then beyond that towards the, where you cut off to Potter Valley, there's a US cell, cell site that's up there as well. But definitely, I've worked for US Cellular, I've worked for Verizon, I've worked for Sprint, I've worked for AT&amp;T, almost exclusively throughout Lake County, but all the way up to Del Norte as well. So I'm very familiar with all the counties around here and all of the cell sites. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
I'd just like to, thank you for the presentation today. Obviously, public safety is one of the things here in Lake County that we pride ourselves on, always looking to try and bring in the most current technology. So appreciate the presentation today, and would just like to hear from our constituents here today to hear the response from our community.
All right, thank you. I've had a presentation personally with Illumination. I do think that their technology has some benefits. I know that I was slightly concerned about the question about the error rate, and based on what they told me, the artificial intelligence learns as they go to better understand what it's looking at. I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that you said, or the first year, the error rate can be expected at about eighty percent, and then, and that Illumination themselves is in charge for the first year of looking at the early detection to help train the artificial intelligence and better understanding what it's looking at in communities that it's installed in. Is that a correct statement?
Yeah, so, so the first year of operation, while the system's learning, your particular geography, there is a pretty high error rate, it's not quite eighty percent, but, well, we do, that's why we recommend at, at the very least, the first year, which we fund, is that it goes through the third-party monitoring center. It's not ours, we hand that over to experts, this is what they do, you know, twenty-four seven, and that's the, the center that would be in Arizona, and because it's all driven through technology, it's a split second between the detection to the monitoring center. So, yeah, strong recommendation that you go to a monitoring element, and that's where everyone we've spoken to and working with, you know, County of Napa is an example, monitoring center before it gets to their fire services.
Right, thank you for clarifying that, and I appreciate the fact that you're already working with our fire districts to look at getting some of these installed. I think that's the right place to get started. I think that overall, early, any early detection, whether it's calling law enforcement or calling firefighters, as soon as we can get to the scene of what is happening, the easier it is to resolve the issue at hand. So I think that early detection is always good. However, it doesn't stop or prohibit the other conversation, which is how do we prohibit these fires from starting in the first place? And so I think fire suppression still remains for me the priority. After that is the early detection, because if we have the messiest of wild lands out there possible, early detection could only help us so much. We need to make sure that our geography and our properties are well-maintained to protect ourselves.
Yeah, this is definitely not a silver bullet. It's part of a much broader series of activities that have to occur.
Right, right. I appreciate the conversation. Thank you Supervisor Pisca for bringing us to our attention. I, I think that the conversation, if you have not, I'm not sure if Illumination has had the conversation with our law enforcement or sheriff, just to check in on, on maybe what their needs might be, because that would be an interesting conversation to see how they can find benefits from this as well as our fire districts. But other than that, let's go ahead, and Jake, let's open it up to the Zoom room for the public to ask any questions or make any comments that they may have.
All right, I've sent a mute request out to the Zoom room floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Hi, my name is Bart Robbins, and thank you very much for this presentation. I just want to make sure that I understood the gentleman doing the presentation correctly, that your company is only offering twenty-four hours of solar battery backup. Did I hear that correctly?
So the, on the IQ Fire Watch, the early detection, there's a battery that is twenty-four hours of backup, but after you get through the, the night cycle, when you're back into the day, the solar will then kick in and regenerate that battery, battery and operate the system. So it, unless we have a period of twenty-four hours of total darkness, it's proven to be very efficient and sufficient. And again, this is a very similar system they're using in eleven other countries.
And in case of wildfire where there is very thick smoke, do you know how long your solar backup would work?
As long as there's some sunlight getting through, even in small quantities, it's enough to keep it going, and it takes a very small draw on the, on the electricity. We did look at going to a seventy-two-hour battery concept, and from the manufacturer and other areas that use it, it, it's far too much, it's, it's basically overkill on that. But it's, the, the whole concept is that it's going to regenerate itself even during less than ideal conditions.
I'd like to echo what Paul Duncan said and Jessica Pisca, that our particular area has to have more like between seventy-two hours and a week backup coverage. It's all of our worst nightmare to have been evacuated without cell coverage, and it's very possible with the existing situation and with the service that you're offering.
We, that, we agree with, the coverage or at least the battery length or power lengths to the carriers is driven by the California Public Utilities Commission, and as of July of last year is the first time they've ordered them to have a minimum of seventy-two hours. That's not something we can drive, unfortunately. That's the carriers who put that there. Our, our batteries are related to the detection. Yep, well, I agree with you very much, though.
I understand that, but we risk even losing nine-one-one, and also that coverage isn't required by the PUC until 2022. So what we will need from your company is something that meets the needs of our county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jake, let's go ahead and see if we have another public comment.
All right, well, I will, I sent an additional unmute request out to the Zoom room floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, hearing none, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board. Supervisor Pisca, in part B of your agenda item, you were requesting potential direction. Do you have a suggestion of what the direction might look like? Just looking to see what your thoughts were.
My suggestion is that we start looking how, looking at the county sites that we could add to, to the system, that the fire chiefs are looking at with the fire stations. And Chris, how far along are you with those fire stations? Are you in contract yet?
We, no, we have verbal agreements. We have to get a contract back to them, and part of the challenge again is encouraging those carriers that, okay, we're ready to go. Sometimes with them, it's the chicken or the egg. Build it, then we'll put our stuff on there. The revenues from that relationship is what drives this, so we're still pushing on that. But we are in agreement formation that we need to get to your fire chiefs.
Okay, well, I would like to see our county move in that direction to see what sites that we own could be part of the network. I know that, as Supervisor Sabatier brought up, we have a lot of wild lands that need to be managed, and that's something that I work on really hard every day, but that is truly a years-long process. It's going to be something that never ends, and so it's really something we can't wait for. So I would just really like to move forward with having discussions with Illuminations coming into our county.
So just to clarify, ask staff to review the technology, the product being offered, and how to possibly benefit from that technology, and then come back with an agenda item on either looking to do an RFP or looking to do something along those lines. That way we can go ahead and make decision then?
That's what I'm looking for.
Okay. Do we have agreements from the board that this is something we want to see them looking at?
Yes.
Okay. Looks like there's consensus for that. Did you have a particular staff that you were thinking of, a specific department?
Well, I know it is, it is difficult for community development right now. I'm guessing that that would be the, the area, or we could get input from Lars, Director Ewing? I'm not sure.
I, I'm thinking maybe OES, asking them to review this, since that would be who is in charge eventually of reviewing the cameras and all the early detection. I think having their feedback on their thoughts on this, and then how they feel they can benefit from it might be a good way. Okay, I see that message just popped on. I was hoping to get her comment.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that we might convene representatives from a few departments to look at this. The Public Services Department is the one that would be able to speak to existing sites. Certainly, OES would speak to the points we just raised. Our office can convene the, you know, a team of staff to look at this.
Supervisor Simon, you were starting to say something.
Yeah, and just other companies and, and opportunities that may be out there, you know, ultimately, you know, this is, from my understanding and in the presentation, and I have had conversations with Richard in the past, you know, about this potential project, but this is a right-of-way, you know, right? These things will be going in the right-of-way, so that obviously would include Public Works, you know, so, yeah, agree with looking at the opportunities that may be coming down the, down the pipe, but I want to thank you, Mr. Chair, for clearing that, that, that would be eventually trying to build to an RFP that will go out to other companies too. So appreciate the presentation today, and thank you for bringing this forward, Jessica.
And, and I have a question to both Supervisor Simon and Supervisor Pisca. You're both on the Risk Reduction Authority. Is this something that the Risk Reduction Authority can try to tackle, or is that something to continue as was just described and bring it to the department heads and then come back?
Well, my thoughts is, obviously, you know, the ones doing heavy lifting will be our, our department heads, so looking at this opportunity through there, and so I feel obviously.
And so I feel obviously staying in touch with the program. But Jessica, you know, has, has a connection with this business opportunity or thing that may be coming down the pipe. So, you know, obviously we'll stay involved. But our, our department heads are the best ones to, to give recommendations.
I agree with that.
Okay. And I see at least three nods, if not more. And so staff has direction. Perfect. Thank you very much, both Richard and Chris, for your presentation. And maybe we'll be hearing from you guys again in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.